Right. Good evening and welcome. We're excited to see so many of you here for our May 16th Environmental Planning Commission meeting. We've been on a little bit of a hiatus, so nice to see everyone. And if we can, first item on the agenda after our call to order is a roll call.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Kamai.
Here.
Ramirez.
Here.
Scarborough.
Here.
Vice Chair Baird.
Here.
And Chair Haymeyer. Noting for the record that Commissioner Ramirez absent.
And item number three tonight is minutes approval for the meeting on March 21st. As I was not present at the meeting, I will not be, and taking it that I'll be abstaining. But were there any comments or corrections to minutes from March 21st? Yep. Commissioner Cox.
Yeah, just two corrections. The roll call has seven members present and one absent. We don't have them. And the second thing that in the list of names, I think, should have been Xiaoyu Shan. So I, yeah, I'm going to write the name down and I will send it over.
It's established, right? Thank you. Any public comments? None. I'd like to enter the motion to approve the minutes with the two corrections Commissioner Cox mentioned, that under item number two, it should be six members present, and then a correction to the number from the public that will be provided for this document. Commissioner Barrow, thanks. Second. Backhand by Vice Chair Baird. Any discussion? All those in favor, just raise your hand. So five present and one absent. Thank you. All right. Our next item on the agenda is oral communications from the public. This portion of the meeting is reserved for any members from the public question to speak on something that is not the East Wisman Precise Plan or the Architectural Design Standards. No public comment on items not on our agenda tonight. We'll jump right into our study sessions, beginning with the East Wisman Precise Plan, Land Use and Transportation Policy Topics, which will begin with a presentation by Scott.
Thank you very much, Chair Haymeyer. Thank you, Commissioner. As Chair Ramirez said, this is the East Wisman Precise Plan, Land Use and Transportation Policy Topics. My name is. Here's where we are in the overall Precise Plan process. We've had community workshops, some initial public meetings with the EPC and City Council, and now we're in what we're expecting to be our last round of kind of policy-level strategy study sessions with the EPC and City Council before we dive headfirst into our public draft drafting, and we'll release that probably in summer or fall of 2015. And then following that, we'll have more public meetings with the EPC and City Council to do the public draft, refine those, and come back for adoption in early 2019. We did have a city council study session back in February. Here's a summary of the key things that the city council discussed at that time. For the most part, the council largely agreed with the EPC direction on these topics, ranging from additional information regarding controls about job housing balance, ownership housing, walking and biking, sustainability, endorsing a series of character areas, minor height and FAR map changes, base FARs and office FARs and mixed-use areas, village center intensity to be allowed four stories, which would entail a new land amendment, and affordable housing strategy with flexibility to reach an overall goal of 20% affordable units in the area, and a jobs housing linkage strategy that ties office requirements to the amount of housing that's being built. This study session is going to cover four main topics: proposals for several new residential areas, a neighborhood commercial strategy, an open space strategy, and a transportation The first topic for tonight's discussion is the staff and the project team are proposing several additional sites to allow residential uses. These sites are shown here in these big rocky red areas overlaid over where parks are also proposed in the area. The residential would not be required in any of these areas, much like the other mixed-use areas in the East Wisman Precise Plan where residential would just be an option. Office development would also be allowed. The original residential sites were based on the community outreach, integration of mix of uses, property owner interest, current building stock, and development in the pipeline. These new sites are based on some analysis of additional opportunity sites, including the opportunity of filling in large open public parking lots, consistency with evolving Precise Plan policy related to affordable housing and the jobs housing linkage strategy, consistency with neighborhood properties, as well as providing additional redevelopment incentive for properties where we may want additional public paths, or streets, or public open spaces. If the EPC and City Council are interested in this change, the intensities shown here are proposed. This is, these are based on compatibility with surrounding sites, distance from light rail, and neighborhood commercial, and other public amendments. So this is the first question. Does the EPC support allowing residential land uses on the sites identified? The pros I listed, there are some cons. There could be a loss of economic development opportunities if these sites are redeveloped with residential, they would be lost as office or industrial sites potentially. In addition, there are contamination on most of these sites, up to and including deed restrictions on residential and other requirements. However, the, as I said earlier, the plan would require residential, and this would leave open the opportunity to have those deed restrictions addressed and amended in the future in residential. Oh, and I did, I did want to mention that I handed out a letter from one of the MEW companies that manages one of the large contamination areas. They had some concerns about expanding the residential. Considered to be bad.
Can we ask him to speak up, please? Can you speak up a little?
Yeah, I will, I will speak up for sure. The next topic for discussion tonight is our neighborhood commercial strategy. It includes a description of the uses that would be included in among neighborhood commercial uses, locations where neighborhood commercial would be required, some incentives to encourage neighborhood commercial, and urban design strategy to allow neighborhood commercial even in spaces that are ultimately built for office. So the uses for neighborhood commercial would include retail, restaurants, fitness, personal service, community gathering, but also small medical offices and small other offices like architects and lawyers. We are proposing a limited set of locations where retail or these neighborhood commercial uses would be required. A major retail area at the existing village center, which is the larger circle you see on the left, smaller retail requirements at other nodes throughout the Precise Plan, the smaller three circles where around 1,500 square feet may be required. This is all consistent with previous direction from the city council on the overall land use strategy. Neighborhood commercial strategy includes these incentives, FAR exemptions for retail uses or neighborhood commercial uses, parking reductions for these uses to refer to shared parking, public parking access for these uses, and small business being recognized as a potential, support for small businesses being recognized as potential public benefit. As I said earlier, urban design is also a key part of this strategy. If we can encourage office developers to design their ground floor spaces to be compatible with a range of non-residential uses, then as the area grows, new neighborhood commercial could go into those spaces that are designed compatibly. That could include these large storefront windows like you see in this image here, awnings, locations for signage, and other urban design opportunities. So the second question is whether the EPC supports the proposed neighborhood commercial strategy. Third topic tonight is our open space strategy. It includes an implementation of four different types of public open spaces, including a central open space, mini parks, a neighborhood park, and what we're calling publicly accessible or public access open spaces. The plan proposes a public open space goal of 30 acres, which is consistent with the city's parkland goal of three acres per thousand residents, as we are projecting about 10,000 residents with the 5,000 units here in the Precise Plan area. To reach this goal, public access open space, which is different than dedicated public parks, would need to be included, not just the public parks being dedicated. This map shows a conceptual distribution of these public parks, one potential public access open space among many that may be constructed, and a conceptual network of greenways. The parks may be in slightly different locations as projects are implemented. Central open space could be a key defining feature for the area. It could be one to two or one to one and a half acres. That's about the size of Klein Park, corner of California Street and Ortega Avenue, or it's about half of Cesar Chavez Plaza, which is in downtown San Jose, if you've been there. The image on the upper left is of Cesar Chavez Plaza in San Jose, and this orientation gets an idea of about half of Cesar Chavez Plaza. So what you see in that picture would be about the size of this central open space. It could include station wayfinding features, it would be right next to the Middlefield Station, could include events, outdoor dining, and other amenities that could help define the East Wisman. Mini parks will also be included. They would serve the immediate area, they would include playgrounds, gardens, and would be similar to other mini parks in the city. The plan proposes one neighborhood park. Neighborhood parks are a little larger than mini parks. They have opportunities for a range of recreational facilities, so a large park gives you more opportunity for, for open space facilities than multiple small parks. It is a challenge to dedicate a large park, especially when you have several smaller parcels in the area. It could really significantly affect feasibility of development on those sites. And so a potential solution to that is requiring a master plan area for this area bounded roughly by Maud Avenue, Clyde Avenue, Loog and the light rail tracks, and the SFPUC. This area is commonly owned by Google, and a master plan would give them the flexibility to plan this area as a whole, distributing land uses in a more flexible way. It would also give the, give an opportunity to consolidate open space requirements into a single larger neighborhood park. Public access open spaces are the last type of open space that we're talking about today. These are not dedicated, they are, continue to be owned by the private property, and they're designed with the development rather than designed by the city through an outreach process run by the Community Services Department. The key thing here is that they could be built on either residential or office sites, unlike public parks, which would need to be dedicated by residential development. Since it can come from more properties, it could help us reach the 30-acre goal that we have for the open space strategy. So here's question three, does the EPC support the proposed open space strategy for the plan? The last topic tonight is our transportation strategy. The policy basis for the transportation strategy is, like North Bay Shore, a gateway capacity. We've identified five separate key intersections and interchanges where overall roadway capacity is of concern. These limit, these key gateways have limited capacity for inbound AM and outbound PM trips, based on the fact that this area is primarily office. So new area-wide trips in the area are limited by the capacity of these intersections and interchanges. So the capacity of these gateways would inform the peak hour trip generation for the area. This would inform our overall, our more detailed policy, which we would come back to you with, with the public draft, which could include improvements, specific transportation demand measures, demand management measures, transit solutions, and regional solutions, to help keep those gateways below their capacity. East Wisman is different than North Bay Shore, though, it's important to recognize. North Bay Shore, the, the gateways really just serve North Bay Shore. Here, these gateways serve a range of regional traffic, so regional growth could use up this capacity even if East Wisman is not. It's also very difficult to enforce an area-wide trip cap, which is something that we have in North Bay Shore. So we would be, we don't see that as a feasible opportunity here. On the other hand, we can continue to have site-specific peak hour trip caps, which is something that we've been implementing with other projects that the city's approved over the last five or six years. So based on preliminary analysis, this trip cap would, would be very aggressive. It would be anywhere from .6 to .7 trips per thousand, roughly equivalent to a 53% trip reduction in the terminology that we've been using for previous East Wisman projects, which had 20% trip reduction. As I said, this is very aggressive and probably not feasible for most projects in the near term. There are options. We can base the strategy on VMT or other sustainability measures rather than strictly a capacity-based measure, or we can phase in higher trip reduction measures as they become more feasible. Both of these run the risk of future congestion that could, you know, cause spill-over traffic impacts in surrounding neighborhoods. So this complicated slide is our overall proposed transportation strategy. We're getting, we're here today to get EPC's input on this. Peak hour vehicle capacity at these intersections would inform an area-wide maximum trip generation, which would inform specific improvements, TDM, transit, and regional solutions. In addition, would include project-specific trip caps, near-term flexibility for development with higher level, TDM levels expected in the long term, and monitoring for development review as projects are approved. So next steps for the Precise Plan, we are taking it to a city council study session. We're going to take EPC's recommendation on June 5th, and as I said before, a public draft, you can expect Halloween fall, and final adoption, we're expecting in early October. Here's a summary of questions. This concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have. We also have a key transportation consultant here, Dan Rubens, with Farrar Peers, and our main Precise Plan consultant, Eric Yerkovich, with Ramey and Associates, who are also available to answer any questions tonight.
Thank you so much, Chair. And let's start with any clarifying questions from the commissioners, and we'll open it up to public comment and bring it back for discussion. Which question would it be? Vice Chair Baird, start us off.
Can you clarify on slide number 17? We identified five, and I count four barrels. Is one of these considered to be multiple?
Yeah, we're treating Ellis and Manila separately because it does serve a different arterial coming into the area. Manila Drive is, is more and more an alternative to 101 for people coming into the area.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cox.
Yeah, so am I allowed to ask motivational questions now, too, as to how they, or do you want to save those for later?
I think we're just clarifying any of the content you've covered.
Clarifying?
The content that's been presented. Go ahead, try it out, and let's.
Well, okay, I'll try it out. I guess one of the things, I mean, with respect to the residential FAR incentives, I mean, you know, how do those compare with the ones in North Bay Shore? So like you're, you're talking about like 2.5 and something like this?
Yeah, 2.5 in some areas and 3.5 in other areas.
Okay, and what's, what's typical in like the core area and the gateway area in North Bay Shore? Or, I mean. We have three neighborhoods defined, so what, what kind of FARs are we located?
It's roughly similar to 2.5 to 3.5.
Okay.
And there's, I think, one area that actually goes with the trip.
I had a follow-up question on the residential contamination. There were some concerns that were brought up based on the residential contamination. I guess what I'm wondering is, is that, I mean, we've seen projects in the past, you know, in particular, Mr. Tunnel could tell you about the Flowermark project, where, you know, the developer agreed to do residential decontamination. There was also a proposal to do it at the, at the Tide House site. And I'm wondering, clearly, some developers do come forward with this, and yet you noted in the staff report that, you know, this could be difficult to handle in, you know, the East Wisman area. What is it specifically that makes it harder here than in other places that we've seen, given that we're getting very generous FARs?
I, I'm sure that there are other people who can speak to this at least as well as I can. The, the challenge, there are a lot of specific, site-specific deed restrictions and agreements in the East Wisman area, and there may be such in, in other areas as well, but these, these site-specific restrictions are often between the property owner and regional agency like the Water Control Board, or there are agreements between one of the, you know, one of the companies, the MEW companies, and the property owner. And so these agreements are difficult to renegotiate, and obviously, you, you put out a large enough carrot and people will, people will work to renegotiate them, and if it's, you're dealing with a regional agency like the Water Board, they have standards, and once you reach those standards, you can renegotiate those agreements as well. So we, we don't think that residential will never happen on these sites. Certainly, there are MEW sites that are already, there's one MEW site in particular that's already moving forward with a gatekeeper application for some of the property. And so this is something that, that, that we see as possible even here, and there are certainly design mitigations that you can do to make residential work, and there are contamination mitigations that you can do to reduce the level of contamination over time.
Okay, okay. Thanks for pointing those out. I was curious about, you know, when you talked about the neighborhood centers, like two out of the four are actually in pure office areas, and I'm kind of wondering, you know, really, we think of neighborhood centers as serving residential, so what, what, why, why that particular choice?
I think it's about distribution. If you look at the map, you see at the map, the, there, the, the smaller dots are really very well distributed around the area, and this ensures that there's some serving use for office people, no matter where they are in the area.
So like on, on open space strategy, it seems like, and you outlined it when you talked here about the idea that, that, you know, the public's use of private land, you know, would be an important part of being able to reach the 30-acre goal. And I'm kind of wondering, like, do you have a sense of what percentage you're thinking to lean on that, and also, actually, out of the amount of time, you know, anyway, generally available to the public? You know, we heard about it in the Link City project, but the idea is that while, you know, people are normally working, probably, it's not available, just the same as a school, it's not available to the public, even though, you know, they may have parks. So where's your thinking there?
So certainly, individual projects would have individual, well, first, let me say that, that there are some details that we need to work out in, in actually implementing this. Part of that is specific requirements on specific sites. Certainly, that's a goal, is to have these sites be useful and well-distributed across the area. But, so on, on smaller development sites, you might not expect a, you know, a 1,000 square foot area or something like that to be useful if you just apply a blanket. That's something that we are still, that's a detail that we're still working out. The, as far as use during different times of day, again, that's another detail that we are, that we would still need to work out in, in the Precise Plan. If you have any guidance on that, we would be open to, to hearing it and moving forward. There are examples of projects that provide, that are providing publicly accessible open areas all the time, and one example is the Symantec project, which has a plaza in front of their, their little commercial area, which is open to the public all the time. So, or at least during reasonable hours. I mean, you probably, you probably set up some, you know, nobody cackes at you there at midnight or whatever, but, but during reasonable hours.
Then a question on, on, on the, you know, traffic impacts. What I'm wondering is, like, first of all, you talked about the idea that traffic can spill over into adjacent neighborhoods, and I'm, I'm trying to see how, you know, I, I don't see clearly a lot of alternate paths, because this is all a big area that's pretty huge uniform, and I'm just wondering, you know, are you eventually thinking to envision, you know, like with the trip cap we have in North Bay Shore, it's kind of like, well, you know, if this happens, then it means we can't do more until we fix the issue? And is there a similar kind of thing that you can do with this, other than simply, you know, saying that we'll go development by development, and then, you know, I mean, you know, once it looks like we're in danger of hit or miss, we just have to say no?
So you can't, because so much of the traffic is, is potentially from, from outside the area or few outside the area, or through trips, right? You can't say that everybody going through Marion Central is bound for the East Wisman area. So we can't really put an area-wide trip cap on the traffic at Marion Central, because that could be caused by any number of other projects outside the area. So no, the East Wisman Precise Plan isn't looking at an area-wide trigger that would stop development. Certainly not formally, right? Not in any kind of formalized way. Certainly, new development above .4 FAR office would be discretionary, right? It wouldn't be allowed by right. And so the city council would have an opportunity to review traffic, you know, traffic impacts in the area and make case-by-case decisions during the development review process about what the status of monitoring in the area is.
And then just one last question. When we worked on North Bay Shore, I mean, we had a long list of potential transportation improvements that, you know, could be taken in order to, you know, either produce more capacity, either in public or private transit, or deal with choke points or whatever. I mean, are you thinking of, and do you have an idea of a similar list for this area? Or, you know, what's, what's possible?
Yeah, that's something that we're working on.
Okay. That's, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Other clarifying questions? Commissioner Barrow.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to follow up on the, on the trip reductions. It sounds like from what you're saying, the information that you get from doing the intersection trip counts would be compounded so much with through trips, it couldn't really, it doesn't sound like it'd be very useful information. Is that, am I getting that correctly?
It's, it's useful information because we know how much, how much capacity there is at these intersections and there changes. We know how many cars can fit through in a particular peak hour. We also have some idea about how much growth is anticipated in the region over the next few years, based on known projects in the area. Based on that, we can kind of back into how much capacity is available for East Wisman Development. Development.
Okay, but it sounds like you wouldn't have the amount of data or the kind of data that you need to tell whether the programs that the employers there or whoever else would be there. Unlike in North Bay Shore, you wouldn't seem to have that, necessarily have that link, say, okay, well, this now has these programs, and so they're reducing their trips, and we see that over in these intersections.
It would be based on driveway counts. So, we would, we would require the developer to, and we're already doing this, to count the number of cars that enter their site every day for, you know, a period of time. And then, we would base, we would determine whether their transportation demand management strategies are successful based on those driveway counts.
Would that also include, would it capture people who take an Uber or other kind of single-accident, I guess that's a double-accident vehicle, but something that is equivalent to a single-accident vehicle?
There are certainly challenges with taking an Uber, and we'll continue to have those discussions and try to figure that out.
I'm interested in the vehicles while traveled, how that measure might work, what that might give us as far as, you see how it'd be meeting our sustainability goals, or it gives good information for that. How would you see, would you see that as also linking into the trip, like, if you get the traffic?
So, it's, it's very, very difficult to enforce VMT. You'd have to get almost perfect survey response, right, from your employees or your residents, and that doesn't, that doesn't happen. So, that's why the site-specific driveway counts is really the easiest way to enforce any kind of trip reduction measure. VMT could be a basis for setting those trip reduction measures. One of the challenges, though, is that the, we can, we can continue to study the issue and kind of report on what different levels of trip reduction measures result in when it comes to VMT, but ultimately, if you, if a, the linkage between VMT and congestion is not necessarily there. So, you could have a lower VMT, but it wouldn't necessarily address the congestion at these gateways.
Okay, thanks. And I have a question on the, on the greenways. It looks like they're all off-street, like the path, the multi-use paths on greenways are all the off-streets that come.
So, we're going to have a range of different transportation modes. Some of them will be on-street. The greenways are, in their character, more off-street. They're kind of between buildings rather than along. We are going to have bike lanes and cycle tracks and things like that, and those have already been reviewed by the EPC, the city council, about a year ago.
Any other questions? Commissioner Cox?
I have some questions related to the peak hour trips. So, in the presentation in the staff report, it talks about how moving to the .6 to .7 peak hour trips per 1,000 square feet is a very aggressive reduction. I was wondering if we could talk a little bit about how we got to that number, and I know that additionally, on page 19 of the staff report, there's talk of maybe a lower office alternative. I was just wondering if you could get a little bit more information about that.
Want to take that one, Dan?
Sure.
I thought it would be you.
We're here just so I can project that way, too.
That's great. Thank you.
So, the transportation analysis, there's really two parts, and it was, the question that was asked of us is, how, what does the trip generation need to be for East Wisman to have a system that will work? Right, so a vehicle system, where the vehicles will still flow around on the system and not be impeded or blocked. So, it was really two parts. We looked at each of the gateways, we saw essentially what the maximum number of vehicles could be at that, at those gateways, and then we also did an estimate of the number of, essentially, an estimate of the entire trip generation for East Wisman. So, we know what it is today, we know what it would be in the future, based on kind of the mathematical calculation of each of the gateways, and that's how we came up with the estimate. Yeah. So, basically, what we were answering was, what could the maximum number of East Wisman vehicle trips be if you still were to have an operating vehicle system?
And we, and are we doing anything currently to help us reach this goal, or would it be, is that why it's so aggressive in terms of difficulty to implement, in that we don't have anything in place now, so moving to that is why it would be so difficult?
Yeah, so, we did test a number of scenarios, started kind of with the current practice of the 20% DDM reduction and what that looks like, and then kind of stepped from there down to the numbers that Eric had presented, and put with that kind of, you know, a list of regional transportation improvements, local transportation improvements. So, as you kind of move to a lower and lower trip rate, there's, there's more physical transportation improvements that you need to do to accommodate or to achieve that.
My next question doesn't have to do with anything today, but something coming up in the future, which is the main executive meeting with Goddard Mill, it says that reports from that will be given to councils. If there's any way that EPC can also see that information, I think that would be helpful as we go through the process further.
Sure.
Thank you.
A couple of questions regarding the transit right immediately to the east and south is Sunnyvale, and there has been a large turnover in office buildings and anticipated growth there. So, how do we, how do we factor the trip reduction when there's other outside forces that are going to be creating potentially a lot of cars that could be through, through-drive? So, how do we, how do we factor for that?
Well, I mean, I'll start, but I'm sure Dan can provide more detail. So, anytime you do a, anytime there's a large project, you are required to report publicly how many trips you're expecting from that project. You do an analysis that shows where you think those trips are going to go. So, it's really just a process of aggregating all of those reported projects and approved projects, and kind of placing the East Wisman Precise Plan within what's already been reported.
You're talking about Sunnyvale?
Yeah, so Sunnyvale has reported these projects and gone through what's called our transportation impact analysis process that we have, that everybody has to do.
And then, secondly, when we're talking about remediation or potential contamination on some of the sites that we're exploring, how difficult or different would that be from Wisman Station or some of the areas that have been developed? Are those sites more contaminated than what we've been?
I don't know the details of the contamination. I wasn't around Wisman Station, so, I don't think I can give a comparison for that.
Any other questions? That's it? Commissioner Maris?
A couple of quick questions. Are you evaluating parking standards that are as aggressive as those that we're using in North Bay Shore, your traffic analysis?
Well, we are, we're kind of going the other way. We're kind of setting the, starting from what our trip production goals are, and then we're going to have parking ratios that are based on that. So, we haven't really, we don't have a set traffic, a parking number that we're inputting into the traffic analysis. That being said, in East Wisman, we do have a challenge where the, it's better integrated with adjacent neighborhoods, so there's kind of this buffer area where you might expect that there could be parking spillover impacts, people from office development deciding, oh, I can park at my office development, or, you know, I'm going over a trip cap trigger, you know, driveway count, I don't want to do that, so I'll park in the neighborhood. So, we do want to avoid that, and that may necessitate slightly different parking standards in East Wisman. You might have to have baseball with this.
Thank you. And then, it may be helpful, I think, if you could give us a sense of what kind of enforcement mechanisms are available to help us achieve the trip production goal. I think it's not clear, it sounds like a largely aspirational goal right now, and in order to get there, it'd be helpful to know what could we possibly do.
So, again, we're coming up with the details now. We want confirmation on the strategy before we iron out these details, but here are some options. We already have a penalty structure that sets fines on development based on the number of trips that they go over their trip cap. So, we've already established that with five or six different development projects that we've approved in the last several years. That's very straightforward, and we expect to continue doing that. The challenge comes, what happens if they keep going over, right? The goal should be to get them down below what their trip cap is. And so, to that end, we are proposing a series of, of measures that we are expecting project applicants to, to say that they would implement if they are unable to keep their trip cap down. So, they're, they're basically losing their freedom to manage their own trips over time. So, these could get more, more aggressive and more onerous, things like required paid parking for your employees or, or other fairly, you know, aggressive programs.
Thank you. And then, just to clarify, is the expectation for the publicly accessible privately-owned open space, that it would be publicly accessible for the life of the project in perpetuity?
Yes.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Cox?
So, these, you know, very aggressive goals in terms of trip reduction, one thing that comes to mind is that when the discussion started with the Los Altos School District about the transfer development rights, a lot of the transfer landed over here, and yet, I mean, you know, some, looking at this, this makes me ask the question, first of all, I guess, is, is that a done deal? Because we heard that, you know, that the Gray Star project is still under review, and then the second thing is, you know, has, have these trip count reduction numbers made you reconsider the idea of whether all of the TDRs really can land here, given, you know, what the effect is going to be?
So, the congestion impacts are really going to be up to council, right? And council could ultimately say that the value of getting another school site is worth the additional congestion of the, and that decision has yet to be made. I mean, they will make that decision when they review these projects. So, it's not currently an input in our analysis, because we are studying a project that doesn't include those TDRs, right? Those TDRs are over and above what we are tasked to study in the, in the, as far as it being currently on the table, yeah, certainly, anything's still up in the air.
Including whether the deal is going to be made with LSAD?
Yeah, I don't have any information, any, any more information than you do about what might, what might or might not happen over the next several months.
Right. But clearly, nothing's been signed at this point, right? It's still in discussion.
Again, like Eric said, I mean, it's, they're both moving forward in different tracks, you know?
Yeah, okay. At some point, a decision will be made, right? Okay, thank you.
Other clarifying questions? Commissioner Maris?
Commissioner Cox asks a really good question. So, I know the TDRs are exempt from some requirements, like community benefit contribution. Are they, or do you anticipate that they will be exempt from any other development standards or requirements from the Precise Plan?
I expect they would clearly be exempt from FAR requirements, HYPE requirements, things like that, or, you know, they would need to be limited in a proportional way to their TDR. There are probably other standards that would logically not apply. Ultimately, as I said, those, they're effectively rezoning decisions, you know, they're, they're case-by-case decisions by the city council about what the form of these developments will be. And I, without knowing more about the development, without knowing more about, you know, discussions with city council, potentially study sessions, I can't say where else the city might, where else the city council might want to give flexibility to those developments.
Thank you. I just have two quick clarifying questions. Eric, you mentioned that's one of the enforcement mechanisms, fines that can potentially be levied as a result of consistently exceeding those caps. Do those fines go back to the TDM or the TMA, excuse me?
The fines that we currently have set up with existing developments do go to the TMA.
And is there anything related to VTA's plan for light rail that we should know about, that would impact East Wisman?
Yeah, so, just for the purpose of everybody knowing, VTA did a, a study for a potential connection between the NASA Bay Shore Station, which is on the north part of this plan area, with North Bay Shore across Moffett Field. The city council reviewed it a few months ago. The city council also reviewed a plan to do a automated transit system shoreline Boulevard, and it turned out that some of those routes were kind of supportive of each other, and so council's direction was to try to move those projects forward hand in hand in a kind of mutually consistent kind of way. So, they're still moving forward. I don't have any details on how they're going to look, or where they're going to be located, or what the technology is going to be, except they're both moving forward.
Any other questions, Commissioner? So, now I'd like to move in if there are comments from the public. We are limited to, I think, three minutes. If you could grab a card, it might be floating at the desk or in the back. If you could announce who you are and share your comments with us on your schedule.
Hello. I have to speak up now because I made a fuss. My name is Don Lapidus, and I'm here today to, to talk to you about the wagon wheel area of the plan. And I sent you a letter, and I have some exhibits attached, and if I could call your attention to those, I could, that explains. We're basically requesting, and I know I'm a little late on this, but it's important to me, and I think it's important to the plan, that we expand the, the area, the wagon wheel area from where it exists, shown on exhibit two, to Ben Avenue. We're short on, on, a little, the city staff has told us in the past, they're short on commercial land in that area, and we found that, that any commercial on the wagon wheel property itself wouldn't work. We've looked at several alternatives, and the owner of the property will be speaking to that in a few minutes, but, but we found that that wasn't a successful, that's not a successful design in this particular area. So, I was talking to Eric, and he said, you know, we really ought to, we really plan for the future, and so I started, I'm a planner, I should, it seems obvious, but all of a sudden, a light went on for me, and I realized, when I looked at this, this wasn't a future plan for the, in the wagon wheel area, it's a current plan. Properties one through five are designated for single-family, when they could easily be combined with the, with the uses below, in, within the wagon wheel plan, and enhance the opportunity. They could enhance the opportunity for commercial with two corners that will give it visibility and, and access. and access and ability to better plan the block. Also, on the, if you look at exhibit number three, also on the residential portion, which we're mostly concerned with, if you added parcels one, two, and three, and eight, you would really have a very nice critical mass property to do a much better job. The point was brought up that maybe there's compatibility problems with the neighborhood on Flynn Avenue. That doesn't have to be. We could actually reduce the densities along Flynn Avenue and as people drive through it, they would perceive a lower density. In fact, with the densities that's in the zoning right, if we were to increase the zoning on parcels one, two, and three to a medium density, even a low medium density, we would get three or four times the number of homes along there. And that's something we desperately need in that area, our homes. By the way, if we, as we developed this property, we proposed to do it as for sale housing. And I know that's something that the city, almost every council person I've talked to and some of you, I've heard you say during the meetings that you want to see for sale housing.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I have one clarifying question for you.
Question, so Mr. Lapidus, can you share with us if you've had any conversations with the property owners for parcels one, two, three, and eight?
We have had casual conversations with the fellow on Lot Eight, where we actually approached him. And we haven't really proposed anything to him because we didn't know what you folks were doing with this plan. And I've been to several wagon wheel homeowner association meetings and a couple of the people who live along here, along Flynn, have said, hey, when you get ready to develop, let me know, we ought to just talk, maybe we'd be interested in selling. So people have been interested, but we can't pull it all together until you folks decide what you're going to do and we find that it's a viable, a viable project. You know, at the end of the day, it's got to, it's got to be profitable. So, yeah. Also, I will say, as it relates to folks that are, that are living on Flynn Avenue and this gentleman, I found there's two things you should consider when you're, when you're in that situation, or those people normally consider when they're in that situation. One, are they adding value to my property? And two, can I live here for the rest of my life without being bothered? And that also can be done through a grandfather clause in the ordinance. And so if, as long as we can show these folks that they're, by changing the designation of the property, that it adds value and the grandfather clause, I think, I think it's not a hard sell that they would agree to that. But we have to work on it.
Thank you very much.
Steve Gazara, I'm following up on Mr. Lapidus's comments. I'm one of the owners of the wagon wheel property. My family and my partner Frank Albert own the site, been in our family for a long time. We're seriously interested in pursuing a for sale housing, higher density residential project on the site. I've been attending the community meetings, EPC meetings, city council meetings, attended to the East Wisman Precise Plan over the last couple of years. And I've seen a projection, a focus on development of village centers with a neighborhood commercial component and so forth. I recognize the city's desire to pursue a mixed use component. And perhaps it may not be required on our site. Our site is right next to the Rotten Robbie gas station and it has a, an odd configuration. It is a rectangle with a square atop to the, attached to the top. And it's not very deep and it is, we're finding it is very difficult to construct, orient a mixed use project on this property that affords ease of access, circulation, convenience for customers, and residential. We feel that our site, as it currently is, is, it's limited, it's constrained, it doesn't function well for two uses. We would like the city to consider affording us the opportunity to build an R3 residential for sale project on this property. I am uniquely qualified to render an opinion as to the feasibility of commercial retail on our property as I was in the commercial real estate brokerage business, selling and leasing commercial property for 28 years. I have leased exclusively for many years, the El Monte Shopping Center in Mountain View, corner of El Camino and El Monte, featuring Panera Bread, Chipotle, CVS, all tenants which I brought to the center. I leased the Grant Road Shopping Center with CVS and Sweet Tomatoes and all those adjunct tenants. I even brought you In-N-Out Burger many years ago. I know what retailers need, I know what they want, and I am very confident that a mixed use urban design project will not be successful on our site. I would like to introduce to you an exhibit. This is a mixed use urban design property on El Camino and Los Altos. Pass this around. And it was developed by Saris Regis Project, Saris Regis Properties. And they developed a lot of residential there on the Los Altos Garden Site. And they introduced a mixed use urban retail component at the very front of the property. And this property was constructed about three and a half, four years ago. The retail commercial at the front is very attractive. Unfortunately, three and a half years, three and a half years later, it's still vacant. Why is it vacant? It's hard to get in and out of, it's hard to find the parking, it's not very accessible. It's still vacant.
Thank you very much for your time.
Anyway, thank you very much for your consideration and I appreciate your time. If any of you would like to discuss this matter further, I'd be happy to introduce more. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Jeff Harding. I'm the Superintendent of Schools for the Mountain View Los Altos High School District. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm also speaking on behalf of Ayende Rudolph, who was the Superintendent of the Mountain View Wisman School District, who couldn't be here tonight. You're certain aware that this project falls within two school districts, the high school district and the K8 district, Mountain View Wisman. And I just want to encourage you to consider the impact on the school districts when we start considering adding 5,000 residential units or 10,000 residences. And how many of those 10,000 people will be school age children? It would depend on student generation rates. We've done some analysis in North Bay Shore and some other areas in this area and would estimate that somewhere in the neighborhood between 1,000 and 2,000 school students would live in this region. And as a result, the impact on schools would be significant. At the elementary level, that's multiple schools. At the high school level, 2,000 students is a high school. So we encourage you to consider that as you consider all the complicated factors here. As the local school district superintendent, we encourage development. I actually live personally very close to East Wisman. It seems like an ideal area for development, but there will be a significant impact on the school district. You're probably aware that school districts receive developer fees as a result of development. I can tell you that those, that the revenue generated is equal to about 7% of the cost of building schools in this region. That number is set in Sacramento and is ideal for putting portables, portable classrooms in the Central Valley. But it does not even begin to cover the cost of adding classrooms here in Silicon Valley with our housing prices and land prices. We have two high schools right now, Mountain View and Los Altos High School, both severely impacted. They're on small school sites as it is. We are in the process of working with the developers at North, in the North Bay Shore region, and how are we going to accommodate those students? There are 46 other projects in my district alone that have already been approved, housing projects. So this would be number 47. We are desperately trying to accommodate students, but with a project this large, we would hope that you would consider some kind of mitigation in your recommendation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Nathan Tuttle with Prometheus Real Estate Group. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Congratulate staff on a great report, very thorough and well done. We own the property located at 675 685 Middlefield Road, it's right at the corner of Ferguson and Middlefield. It's 10 and a half acres. We're located in the transit oriented development section of the, of the precise plan that's being developed. It's the highest density section of the precise plan for residential. You're allowing heights up to eight stories and FARs up to 3.5 FAR. Brought it to the attention of staff previously, but I wanted to state it here publicly as well. In our initial feasibility of the site, we're not able to achieve 3.5 FAR if that's what you're counting on in eight stories. Most of what's been developed in Mountain View over the past several years, you'll notice around town, it's all wood frame construction, that's type five or type three construction. When you go from, that can go up to seven stories. When you go to eight stories, you have to go to type one construction, which is all steel or all concrete. And the costs go up significantly and it makes it infeasible to just add an eighth story. In our analysis, you need to go to about 15 stories to make type one work. So what I'd like to encourage the commission and eventually council to do is to allow some flexibility within this area to go up to taller heights, closer to 15 stories if you want to get to the 3.5 FAR. What that could do in this area is provide a more architecturally interesting development with varying heights, which you won't have everything all at six stories or seven stories and be very monotonous. So it could be a benefit to the overall precise plan. We're very willing to investigate, obviously redeveloping the successful commercial developments that's there now, but we want to make sure the flexibility is built into the plan so that we have an incentive to do so when the time comes. The second thing I want to talk about is the neighborhood commercial strategies that have been proposed, fully support the incentives that have been proposed in the staff report. I think they're important to get the commercial that you want in the precise plan. The third thing I wanted to talk about is open space strategy. Fully agree with the open space strategy that you're undertaking. One thing I'd like to point out is that in the past, we typically run into a lot of owners that want to hold on to their property for the long term. They don't want to sell it, they'd rather ground lease it. It's been brought up before, the city's parkland ordinance doesn't allow for park space to be counted in a development if it's on a ground lease property. You only accept it if it's in fee. I just encourage you to add any flexibility you can to this plan or bring it up as a modification to your parklands ordinance. Again, moving forward in the future, you're going to find a lot of sites are going to, are going to be these ground lease sites and you're going to have much more flexibility to get more parkland in the city if you allow that modification to your ordinance. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
My name is Lee Sumore and I'm speaking because I live on Flynn Avenue since we've been discussing it quite a bit. I'm on the board of the Wagon Wheel Neighborhood Association and I'm president of the HOA that borders directly with a piece of Mr. Garz's property. And I know he and Mr. Lapidus have attended a couple of our meetings and we have had discussions with them. But I would like to reiterate that the sense of the residents on Flynn Avenue, while of course I cannot speak for any individual homeowner beyond myself, in our meetings, what has been expressed is a desire to stay residential, a desire to have developments, you know, we've got a little sliver that comes out to Flynn Avenue. We would like it to fit within the character of the neighborhood. We understand that what happens on East Middlefield could have a totally different character, but certainly where it abuts our residential, we would like to see it fit in with the neighborhood. And again, not go commercial. I believe I heard a little bit of a proposal, I could have misunderstood, but it sounded like they were proposing a little bit of commercial there. I think we would like to see it remain as residential. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
I need to fill out a card. Good evening, my name's Katie Farick and I am here to have LinkedIn. A little bit of a surprise to me that I'm going to speak, but thank you for having us. And I also echo many of the statements, but this was a really great staff report. I just specifically want to laser in on the transportation piece of this tonight. We want to support a 30% trip reduction for office development and not, right now, we have our active project, which you know about, and we, our EIR studied a 20% trip reduction and we're finding that it's been a fairly benign result so far. And we operate a site, you know, we're already operating there at a lower density, but still the trip ratios are such that we can predict, that we can get even more aggressive with our very strong transportation demand management plan and hope to get to that 30% trip reduction. We think we can get there. It'll be a challenge, so I just wanted to kind of surface that as you're considering the difference between East Wisman and North Bay Shore in terms of what is a rational kind of goal for your trip reduction in this area. So that's it. Thank you so much.
Any other public comments this evening? I will bring it back to the commission for first, if we can, based on the comments that we heard from the public, are there any clarifying questions that you'd like to have, staff or Commissioner Ramirez?
Thank you. I have a question about the proposal from the first two speakers. I think what they're essentially proposing is a change in the boundary of the precise plan to include a few additional parcels. Would that be possible? Are we too far down environmental review to do that? How much flexibility do we have to do something with that?
It would be, you know, it's a very small site relative to the rest of the precise plan. So as far as changing the actual analysis, probably not much effect. My concern would be about changing the boundary. There are only a few things. There's a document that we do in the sequel process of the NOSA Corporation, we did it about five or six months ago. And we try to keep that as general as possible. It gives us as much freedom as we can in the process. The one thing we have to have in the NOP is a boundary of the project. So changing the boundary of the project may have an effect on that timeline. I don't know, Eric, you have any thoughts on that of whether it might?
I mean, would require reshooting it, but I don't know that how it would change the schedule necessarily.
Yeah. Again, probably wouldn't change the analysis much. There is the ram, the political ramifications, right, of incorporating it into the change area. Certainly, we would have to have more outreach with the wagon wheel. And integrates their direction to those properties. And we certainly would want to do outreach on those specific property owners as well to make sure that they understand what's in there.
Other quick questions based on Mr. Tuttle's remarks. So if a park space, if for instance, the publicly accessible privately owned open space were proposed on a property with a ground lease that would not count toward the open space parkland requirement? I want to make sure I understood his comment.
Yeah, that's one of those details that we would have to kind of work out, one of those kind of what if paths. You know, certainly a public accessible open space would not count to parkland dedication. So you wouldn't get parkland dedication credit for it as a residential developer. And it wouldn't be dedicated to the city. So it could stay in the ownership of the underlying landowner, even if there's a lease on top. There are some potential ramifications of what happens if it's only a 50-year lease and does the, do the terms of that public accessibility, does that live on beyond the term of the lease? Questions like that that we'd have to bounce off of our attorneys here and kind of what if scenario details, but all of those, all of those questions could be worked out.
Commissioner Cox?
Yeah, just one question. Last time we met, we talked about this idea that flexibility and I guess innovation could help in how to deal with residential, might help us meet our affordable housing needs. I'm wondering, is that part of what you're thinking about when you talk about, you know, some extra zoning residential that might come in with more affordable housing?
We anticipate that it would be a lot easier for office under the jobs housing linkage strategy and under our affordable housing strategy. It will be a lot easier to add office if you're also providing housing, especially affordable housing. This provides that opportunity for those large office campuses.
Okay, and then one related question. When we talked about North Bayshore, we talked about, you know, possible estimated internalization of like 20 to 30%. And I'm wondering, do you have a sense for East Wisman at this point? What kind of internalizations we might look at?
Do you have a sense?
Yeah, so when you're talking about the 20 to 30% TDM, the internalization for residential is in a 35% range. You know, that future scenario with the .65, we haven't looked into that detail.
Because when I'm talking about internalizations, what I'm referring to is the idea of what percentage of people actually live and work in the same area.
Yeah, I mean, what we know in the research is about 35%. Yeah, I mean, that's just looking at, you know, Palo Alto, Mountain View, up the peninsula, you know, what are the portions of people that live and work in their communities?
So you're thinking this is likely to be similar, North Bayshore in that respect?
With what we know now, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any questions, Commissioner? Commissioner, come on.
I was interested in following up on what the superintendent brought up in terms of the increase of people. And as we've been thinking about the additional residential areas, do we have a number on how many students that might be that might impact the school district? I know we're very preliminary.
Yeah, so I don't have a lot to report on that right now, I'm afraid. So we are certainly doing the analysis to get an understanding of about how many students we're expecting. We're certainly working with the district on this, but I don't have any specifics.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Can I follow up on that as well? What kind of opportunities do we have for getting additional schools? Can we take the transfer of building rights from East Wisman and then over to somewhere else? Or something like that?
I mean, that's a program that we've established. I don't see why we couldn't necessarily apply that program in different parts of the city. It's kind of a, something that council's been, you know, has supported. Again, it would require the school district to, either school district to kind of make an action or pursue. So I don't know, we're not in a position here to talk about TDR as a potential opportunity in this project. But you had another question.
What other opportunities are there for encouraging school placement there?
I don't have anything to report on that right now. I know it's an important issue to a lot of people. Sorry to say that I don't have any specific information right now, except that it is something that we are thinking about and we're talking to...
Maybe one piece of information is when the chairman of international school, when their lease expires, and if that would present an opportunity to...
It's a long way out.
It's a long.
Yeah.
The residential, though, would also be a long way out, yeah? Or you think sooner than when that lease expires?
I have it in my notes, but...
But you answered my question. It's longer horizon than what we would expect. Are there further questions before we go into the score? Jasper, have a question.
I guess I do have one question. If we're talking about trying to accommodate parkland and most of the property is leased, but yet that doesn't count for park space or park credits, are we in a position where we can recommend that that needs to be looked at, that the regulations need to be changed, or is that something that's not in our purview to recommend?
That's not a question for the precise plan process right now. Certainly, I don't know, recall...
Yeah, I mean, it's not a formal recommendation per your purview, as Mr. Anderson said, but it's certainly, as we've done with other processes or projects, if you want to submit a comment on to the city council for their consideration, you can certainly do that.
I'm bringing up the first question. Question number one is, does the EPC support allowing residential land uses on this site Commissioner Cox.
So I'm going to put the yes on this because we've seen the difficulty in trying to balance jobs housing situation in this, in our community and just in the Bay Area as a whole, and in particular, you know, it does some additional incentives to getting more residential balance since this is one of the few precise plan areas that, I mean, that is in the change area and hasn't really been touched. You know, this is primary to try to do something. I think the strategy of, you know, giving higher FAR preference residential is kind of what you're going to need to do in order, because I mean, that's where we get our flexibility. We have to equalize housing, you know, to make it as profitable as office for people to choose from. So I say yes.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Schirberg.
I support it as well. The concern I would have, though, is how we would tie it to additional commercial space. In other words, are we going to allow more commercial than proportionally we're going to be solving with adding residential? I would be reluctant to support something where we would be getting further behind in the jobs housing imbalance with the idea that we're adding housing, but then proportionally we're adding more commercial. And I don't know how we can try to put the governor on that, but is there some mechanism that we can utilize?
Yeah, you may not have been here at the meeting when we talked about the jobs housing linkage strategy. That was, that was when we were last here in February, we presented a strategy whereby we changed the requirements for office development based on how much residential has been built. That's how we intend to kind of put a soft brake on the office development in order to allow residential to get constructed and not take up all of the available land with office development.
It's generally supportive?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Commissioner Scarborough.
I'm also supportive. I do have concerns over building housing over the flu and the contamination, but I understand that we do have technology to do that and have people living with no additional risk of ill health. So I would support that. Just to make sure that we're safe.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Yes, I agree with the other commissioners. I'm also interested in knowing whether the commission is interested in looking at the minor boundary modification that was proposed in the letter in public comment specifically to make possible the residential proposal that the property owner is considering for that area. And being respectful of the neighbors on keeping that area residential, but you know, I'm wondering, you know, is this something that we're interested in recommending to the council?
Let's take that second part after we've gone through. If you answered a question, it goes over. But yes, generally supportive. Commissioner May?
So yes, I'm supportive. I think one thing that stands out to me is the staff report talks about where these sites may have residential allowed, but it's not required. And something that we've been talking about with the East Wisman precise plan is the flexibility, and I think that this still helps us achieve that, while also considering the economic development of the area. I know that it has been beneficial to the city, but I think also the impact to our school districts is also important to take into consideration as well as the environmental concerns that Commissioner Scarborough brought up.
And like my fellow commissioners, I'm supportive. I think the idea that these are residential possible sites for possible residential development that have that flexibility is important, done in an environmentally cautious way. Eric, in terms of having this related conversation, would the end outcome be providing a separate comment? If the overall answer from the commissions of us is yes, and then having a separate recommendation or maybe consensus or comment about the specific property owner concern that was raised tonight, what would you recommend?
I would say that you could do that and couch it with, again, it would be a recommendation to council, of course, and that perhaps for the council meeting, staff would do some additional research on the impact this could have on the timing of the project and also potential budget implications if there's additional things that got tripped up that we needed to analyze, more noise or whatever.
And also options. I have options for the applicants to act.
Commissioner, come on.
Are you a comment? Can I ask my question?
No, I was going to make a comment. You can ask your question.
Okay. Well, I had a question, which is, you know, I'm not sure what conversations the city and the property owners already have related to the comments that were given. You know, I don't know if that will help inform us that the city and the property owners are already discussing, and perhaps we'll give that feedback to council, or do you need EPC feedback on that?
If the EPC provides an additional statement or recommendation, that would be included in this. If not, then the staff report to council would probably just include the letter that they sent as attachment without necessarily referencing it or bringing it up.
I do have a question. Thank you, thank you, Chair Hammer. Commissioner May. Question to Mr. Choper, I mean, is, this seems to be a significant thing to talk about, and yet it wasn't agendaized. I mean, is there any legal issue with that?
Well, first, this is a study session, so all of these comments are informal. If you can achieve consensus, you will be, it's not really a recommendation, it's just input to staff to forward on to council. But in terms of a specific development proposal, that is not agendaized specifically, so I would recommend not making a specific recommendation on project or boundaries or, but a general comment could be forwarded, if there's consensus, to consider the applicant's letter, but that would be provided to council anyway. So that specific development proposal, you're correct, is not agendaized.
Okay, and I guess one more question before I make a comment, and that's just that, you know, is it required to have this area annexed into the precise plan to get a zoning change?
No, as Mr. Anderson said, I mean, there could be other options for the property, those properties. And just as a little bit of background, the Wagon Wheel site, it used to be zoned residential, then it was rezoned to office, and was rezoned back to residential. This is a number of years, and we've had a number of conversations with Mr. Gazera and other others during the general plan process about the feasibility of that site, so it's something that the city staff has been aware of for some time.
And I'll just make a brief comment. And I guess I would say, you know, I welcome any proposal for ownership housing. I mean, I understand that we need to go to some higher densities, but I do have a concern that I would not want to plop something out like this without, you know, neighborhood input, particularly from, you know, having it formally noticed and that kind of thing. I would deliver what I have to say about it, just simply that it's an interesting idea, worth exploring, but I really want to know how the community is able to think about that idea.
So this is a question for staff. I always thought it sort of looked odd when you look at the boundaries of how this, the street frontage for Flynn was not incorporated into the plan and that one piece of property. Is that because this is zoned differently?
I don't have any rationale for the shape of parcel. The zoning follows the parcel line.
Okay, so we don't really know the genesis of why those lots were not included. Well, I would be, I would be supportive of exploring the possibilities, but I am concerned about neighborhood input, so I think it would be very important to get neighborhood input. If we can achieve a better project by incorporating more properties and those property owners are interested, I think it would behoove the city to have a better project rather than something that should never get developed because of the shape of the property.
Hearing the comments from the city attorney, I feel like staff has an answer to question number one, and my feeling is that because this letter will be provided for council for their consideration, Commissioner Ramirez, is there anything else you'd like to discuss on? It doesn't sound like there's much of making a recommendation on anything other than this letter should be included, it would be in any case, for council operations.
I think my preference would be for the commission to provide a recommendation. There's no obligation to.
Can't we provide a recommendation? That's not what, that, maybe I misunderstood, but what I heard you say is we're providing general input, something about a specific parcel that hasn't been noticed is not really something we're able to do tonight.
Then were you suggesting a recommendation on what?
On considering including those properties within the precise plan boundary.
I think that's too specific, and it's not specifically agendaized for discussion tonight, but the questions before you are those four questions, and I would recommend sticking to what's on the agenda in the staff report.
So I'd like to move to question number two, which is, does the EPC support the proposed neighborhood commercial strategy?
Okay, so I'll go out with a yes on this one. I think you've got good locations there for these things. I think, you know, there's, and I also support the idea of, you know, some exemptions to help build this out, because I mean, this is going to be a really high-density area, and because it is, both with office and commercial. I mean, any kind of services that you can have here are going to impact very seriously on the quality of life for people there, and, you know, or the one that's orbiting on the Wagon Wheel area, I mean, you know, the idea that they might be able to expand it to include more neighboring or serving services there, I mean, is also a big plus. You know, I'm real, really interested, you know, that you can use whatever innovative idea you can in order to make it, make it work, because this has been a tough one. I remember discussions about, you know, two apartment complexes where the idea of even putting a coffee house there was like, oh, you know, we just can't do that, and you go over to North Bayshore, there was a similar kind of thing that, yeah, we knew we were going to get some brown for me down here, but, you know, we just don't think it's viable. And even going down past Bourbon, you know, like, okay, you know, it looks like people are... are using it, but who's in the retail? You know, I mean, it's still in planning stages, and what the other gentleman said about, you know, the Los Altos vitamin area or whatever, I mean, in order to not even lease it now. So, you've got a real challenge ahead of you here, and I think you've got your head on your shoulders to figure out how to do it and, you know, about it and make it work.
Commissioner Cox is blessing.
Of course, and hopefully somebody else is, too. Chair Haymer.
Other comments? Commissioner Ramirez.
I support the direction laid out by staff.
Commissioner Connect. Um, I support the neighborhood commercial strategy. This is just south of where I live, so I was very interested to see where the different nodes would be for the place making. Uh, on page eight, the list of uses encouraged me when I saw things like a grocery store, a convenience store, I think, at least for myself, it would be great to have an additional place where I can do grocery shopping that isn't standing in the very long line that is shoreline Safeway. But I also think that the, the services, the idea of having recreation, fitness, perhaps libraries would really help create that sense of community. If we're talking about creating as much residential as we're talking about, I think it would be great for people to have options of places to walk or bike. So, I think as we're going forward with the neighborhood commercial strategy, thinking about it through that lens, and given the transportation strategy that we talked about earlier, it'd be a really great way, I think, to get people to not use their vehicles.
Commissioner Scarborough.
I support the strategy. I think the placement is fairly good and central and could help to have a better community there.
And I support as well. Did you say that the stores face, for this one south, would be 1,500 square feet?
The minimum required that we're, we're anticipating in the plan for the smaller circles would be 1,500 square feet.
So, it would be only 1,500 square feet or multiples of 1,500 square feet?
Would you even, did it all require on the development?
Well, I, I'm, I support that. I'm, I'm just concerned about how, who's going to go in there, but I, I, we've got to have retail space so that we can create a sense of community where you can go get a cup of coffee or go get a quart of milk or whatever. You do need to have that to be a viable...
I echo my fellow commissioners. I'm also supportive. I think the idea in particular of the distribution and then the flexibility of commercial space, being able to be flexible and used in other ways, depending on what the demand is as well. Any other comments on question number two? Let's move on to question number three, which is, does the EPC support the proposed commercial space strategy? Commissioner Cox, start us off.
Oh, sure. Okay, so with this one, I would say yes, but I've got some qualifications for it. Um, the one thing is that, you know, I've, I've always had that hope that we'd be actually getting that, you know, three acres per thousand residents, you know, in this city. Well, we never seemed quite to get there, and I think, you know, with this one here, we're, we're, we're trying to get there in principle in some ways, but we're probably still not going to get there. And, you know, then the question comes up, well, okay, so where are we coming short? And, you know, and I think here, this whole idea of, you know, the privately owned space that's accessible to the public is part of the key. Um, you know, when I, I was listening in on, on the discussion about, you know, the, you know, giving park fees to the Los Altos School District, wow, you know, I think it's a lawful thing to help support our schools. I also understand that, that, I mean, you know, that there's a limited, it does limit the time that the general public has for accessibility into that, that, that area. I mean, like, if you think about, like, during the winter, I mean, you know, where the hours are short and, you know, when school is in session, you know, it could be the most of the time that you have, it's just not even available at all. And so, that's why I think it's important to try to understand what is going to be available, when is it going to be available? Look at the liabilities. I mean, if somebody breaks their leg there, who pays? The city or the company? Have we even worked that out? And, and, you know, this, and I'd, I'd like it, you know, while I give LinkedIn first dibs because they came up with the idea. I mean, you know, I wouldn't want to really, I'll listen to what you have to say, but I wouldn't want to go over 25%, let's say, in, in these kinds of things. I mean, if most of it ended up being this, I think we really haven't, we really haven't reached the idea of parks spaces. Parks are important in high-density areas because people have no private open space. And so, I mean, you know, they need recreation, and I wouldn't want to go too far down the list of shortchanging, so that's my comment.
I support the direction for the parks, and I guess following up on what Commissioner Cox said, maybe we could look into additional ways to deal with the opportunities of using these property and possibly some kind of, some kind of agreement on that of when the parks will be, or the open space will be available there and also the owned property. Something that would make it determined more, what it would be usable in, why these are...
Commissioner Connect?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes. And I do as well. Finally, question number four. Does the EPC support the plan's proposed transportation strategy? Commissioner Cox, do I continue your tradition? Again, the conversation goes?
Four, I was holding back to give somebody else a chance. Okay, but I, you know, I'll try to make it quick. You know, this is a real challenge here. I mean, you know, you look at this, I was sitting down calculating and saying, oh, is this name that can help on average that make people? Vehicle is what's... How many I could tie to the roof? But, but I know most, a lot of them can be buses, and that can help, help the, help the average and so. But I mean, still, I mean, you know, when you look at North Bay Shore, right, I mean, we're, we're talking still like, what is it, 60% of people are still single occupancy vehicles? We heard what Ms. Eric said about, you know, like, you know, 20, you know, we got it covered, 30, uh, that's going to be hard, and it's a stretch goal for us. So, so, you know, I think you've done a really good job laying out what the issues are, and you, you know, and you've worked the numbers, and, you know, I think you're in the right direction, but, you know, I don't know how it's going to turn out, and I, but I think I can support what you're doing.
Um, I echo the comments of Commissioner Cox. I guess the devil will be the details. That's why we rely on staff to come up with suggestions and recommendations. I support the plan.
Commissioner Scarborough.
So, I, I support the general direction that you're going on there, but I would like to see those some, well, ideally moving away from the level of service being defined as how many cars need to be at an intersection quickly, into a more general thing, like the level of service for transportation overall, and then times more of our sustainability ideas, which are sustainability goals, which I think we will, VMT would be better for addressing those. So, as you go through, I'd like to see what we come up, come up with there. All the, all the studies that I've seen so far in just about every place in the city say that the level of service for intersections is going to go, it's going to get worse as time goes on, regardless of what the developments will do. So, I'm thinking the, as time goes on, it's going to be less of a useful metric for us and we can look into something else. So, I'd say you could do that, I would appreciate it. Thanks.
Commissioner Connect. So, I also support the direction staff is going, but I completely agree that it's going to be challenging, and that was part of the, I appreciate that answering the question of, you know, understanding where the goals come from, just because I always appreciate how aggressive the city is in, in trying to discourage cars. But, you know, how will it be feasible? And I think that's what Commissioner Bear touched on in, in the details of it. We want to be aggressive, but we don't want to make it so aggressive that it's not feasible for, you know, companies or residents to achieve. So, how do we actually, how do we achieve something that, or have a goal that is actually achievable? And I don't know what metric that is. I, I, it sounds like it's quite complicated and sounds quite more challenging than what we face when we're looking at North Bay Shore. But I, those, those are my comments.
Following, I think, BTAs as much as we can as these parallel tracks are moving forward to keep an eye on how we can get more folks to use the network that we've already invested so much in.
He said, he said, yes. General closing comments from the commission on the latest review of the East Wisman Plac Plan? Commissioner Cox.
Just one last one, maybe, on this point. I wanted to echo what Chair Haymer said, you know. We had some discussion about like, the idea that, is, is it more important to have, you know, like, the fact that we already own the right of way, and we could come up with a better transportation system, bring people through, you know, more quickly and more efficiently, you know, given, is there a possibility of, of a transit spine that goes through there that would make public transportation much more reliable? We should be asking these kinds of big questions because we have a really big problem to solve. So, so, I mean, I like what you did on North Bay Shore, coming up with alternatives, and I'd, I'd like you to do something like that here, too.
Other comments?
A huge thanks to our consultants and our staff, who've been working on this for a long time, and we'll be curious to hear how the community session on Saturday is. Thank you.